I'd like to call to order the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting on October 16, 2023 in our Mount Pleasant Public Schools. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education is a meeting conducted in travel but is now a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that would follow this action by the board. These items may include those discussed at previous meetings or presented to the board in discussion this evening. At this time, please turn up a silent cell phone and stand for our ready matches.
President, Speaker of the House, United States of America, and the group of public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am now going to read our indigenous land acknowledgement statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Nation Native people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Nation Native people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation and a way of honoring indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since studying memorial and whose land on which the study nation of what Indian tribe have resided and will continue to reside on the centuries. We feel it is important to understand the long-standing history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Can I go on with our call?
Thank you, Thompson here.
We need Frank here.
Can you read here?
Tim Otter here.
Jessica Jorgin here.
Okay, everybody. The first thing we have to do is approve our agenda. Stay up in motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Side of the... All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. Our first item on our agenda tonight in our Student Board of Education Representative Report.
Good evening, school board. My name is Stacy Goodrich and I'm the Vice President of External Communications for Mount Pleasant High School Student Senate. So I'm here to share about all the fun things we've got going on here at MKHS. So recently, we had our homecoming and it went really, really great. We ended up making about eighteen thousand dollars in sales and had a higher turnout than ever, which is amazing. And we had lots of participation from students in Spirit Week, float building, the games, all that fun stuff. And everyone I talked to had a great time. I also want to say we are very thankful for all the support from our wonderful community for just supporting us throughout homecoming season. We're thankful for our administration, our students who worked so hard to plan and put everything on, all the students that participated in everything. Well, let's go on and on, but there's just a lot of amazing people that we really couldn't have done without. Not only is homecoming super fun, but it's also a huge fundraiser for Senate. Some of the things that helps us fundraise for include Fun Day in the spring, the farewell tour for seniors, and Homecoming for next year, and way more. So one of our more current things going on is called admin lunches. Admin lunches happen once a month and it's when six of our student senate members get to meet with one of our high school administrators, Mr. Winkler, Mrs. Davis, Mrs. Williams, folks, and begin to eat some pizza, make herbs and spices, and just chat with our admin. In these meetings, we can discuss what's happening at school, good and bad, and just make connections with them. Through these meetings, we've had some really cool things accomplished, like we have feminine products in our bathrooms, students are able to see their lunch money balance on Power School, and can get an extra minute of passing time. One of the first ones of the year is tomorrow with Mr. Winkler and we're excited to continue and keep building connections and making a difference in our school. Our next big event of the year is our snowball dance, which will be taking place on Saturday, January 27. And something new we plan on doing this year is celebrating our snowball court at halftime of the whole boys' basketball game the night before the dance. In previous years, we had the NASCAR winners at the dance and they don't really get a ton of recognition, so we thought it would be fun to tie snowball to basketball, just like how we do Honko in football. And snowball is a big fundraiser for each class's Senate instead of our overall Senate, so it's a great opportunity for classes to make some money and just students to have fun. Finally, in light of the recent events about Halloween, although it doesn't directly affect us, we really feel for the kids that it is affecting and wanted to do all that we can to help. We sent out a survey to everyone in Senate and almost everyone said that they have awesome memories and enjoy dressing up as a kid in the parades. Many believe elementary students should still have that experience. We all collectively agree that Halloween was one of the best memories for us as children and it makes us sad that these kids won't get that same experience we did. We completely understand where the thought is coming from and by mentioning this, we are in no way trying to come at you or disagree with you at all. What we're trying to say is that we're here to help. We would be more than happy to run a costume drive, donate our old costumes, or some type of fundraiser to help out children that cannot afford costumes. We understand that it's too late to really do anything about it now, but we wanted to let you know that we're here to help in future years. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, or ideas, you're welcome to contact myself, our president, Jersey Brackenberry, or our advisor, Maggie Wishmeyer. Thank you so much for all that you do for us and for allowing me to be here and tell you about all the cool things we do.
That moves us to our superintendent report.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, to start our meeting, we want to take a few minutes to recognize two very important groups of individuals that make a difference and really make our schools function every day. So first, October is National School Principal Month. In our district, we always use that as an opportunity to celebrate all of our district administrators. Many of them are here with us this evening, so we want to take a minute to recognize you all. We know that our schools would not run as smoothly as they do without our administrators. We know that our administrators set the tone for everything that happens in our buildings and we are very grateful for all of their efforts and everything they do to make our schools a better place. So I'm going to read your names for those of you that are here. Ling has a certificate to give you, so he'll come up and then, of course, your favorite part, we'll do a photo with you all here with the school this evening. So again, not everyone from our administrative team could be here this evening, but I do want to make sure that we recognize everybody that's part of the team. So if one of you, please come up. So Stephanie Vineyard is our Coordinator of State and Federal Programs. Kim Bishop is Principal of Valles Elementary. Emily Blannick is Principal of Poland Elementary. Linda Boyd is our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Curriculum. Lisa Davis is a Assistant Principal of Mount Pleasant High School. Ginger Faber is our Chief Financial Officer. Stephanie House is our Supervisor of Special Education. Joe Judge is our Chief Information Officer. Erin King is Principal of Merron McGuire Elementary. Robin Lott is our Director of Transportation. Jason McIntyre is our District Athletic Director. Kelly Marahue is our Assistant Supervisor of Special Education. Jeff Pladdy is the Director of the Wade Program and Mount Pleasant Community Education. Josh Rose is our Director of Facilities and Maintenance. Katie Ranky is Principal of Fancher Elementary. Emily Scheiner is our Whole Child Coordinator, also at Fancher Elementary. Mercy Stout is Principal of Gainer Elementary. Mary Kay Vogts is the aggression Isabella Technical Education Center Director. Matt Waltersak is our Middle School Assistant Principal. Darby Weaver is our Middle School Principal. Kristen Lilly is our High School Assistant Principal. John Winkler is our High School Principal. Julie Wright is our Dean of Students at Mount Pleasant Middle School. And Deb Gately is our District Director. Please join me in making this very amazing administration. Do we have to quickly do a picture? You raised my hand up. She's got a little bit of a whip for me. These guys are getting really good. Thank you. The other equally important group that we want to recognize tonight are our bus drivers. You all know, I can't see everybody with the hood in there, but you all know that our drivers start off our students' day, they're the first person they see in the morning, and they're the last person they see before they go home. And I can't think of a more important position to set the tone for our students, to keep our students safe, to make sure they get to school, that they're on time, that they're ready to go, they feel safe, protected, and really welcome. And we're so grateful for our drivers. We have an amazing team of drivers. So again, I'll introduce you all, he'll come up, Ling has a certificate, and then we'll do a photo with the board. So this week is National School Bus Safety Week, and typically in our district, we always recognize our drivers, along with celebrating our annual report from our transportation office, which we're getting here in just a few minutes. So first, let's recognize our drivers. Pauline Butler. Come on up. Miriam Bigelow. Stephen Blass. Carol Feldman. Sonya Feifield. Peter Gillespie. And I should say that Peters is our driver, but also our mechanic, so we're very grateful for his skills. Missy Higgins. Timothy Kirby. Matt Kissel. Karen Keist. Larry Pearson. Jonathan Gorda. Michelle Ryan. Julie Sunderman. Bill Traynor. And Stephen Watworth. Please join me in our round of applause. We might need Joe's expertise to make sure we're good. You know, there are lots of different groups of people that help make our schools function and help us have the success that we're able to have. And sort of our administrative team and our drivers, we couldn't be without them. So thank you very much for all that you do. As I mentioned earlier, the next item under my report is our transportation presentation. So I'll introduce to you Ms. Robin Lott. Thanks for being here, Robin.
Thank you. I wish I would have paid attention more in speech class. So notes, yeah, for sure, but I was turning it off, I wasn't sure how to do it there. I looked at last year's notes and I'm trying to base off of that. I was newly hired in end of December and I appreciate being here. So I had our state reported data from 2021, '22, we had 791 riders in Student Cal Day. '22 and '23 made 820. I go to type one, the next line, the next line is 2023 to '24. While the number is low, I want you to all be aware that calculations were done a bit differently this year. From what I understand, in the past, they were taken off of the student roster and it is actually on the ridership. This year, ridership was collected over five days. In the past, it has been collected one school day. The reason why it is five days this year is there is $125 million to put into the state transportation budget and they are using these numbers to disburse those funds this year. I do not know how they're going to be dispersed, but I want to make sure that we are 100% accurate. So our rider average was 628.24 students. Miles traveled in '22 and '23 is 247,195. That was an increase from the previous year, but this includes summer peak program and into sports trips that we have done, which we have picked up a few more this year because I have some extra drivers. And along with summer school, we participated for high school transport students to make sure that they can get their extra credit that they want for the summer. Fuel consumption, 22, 23, 30,716 gallons. We're paying, this year, we're paying currently $3.71. The year prior was only $3.12, so our cost of fuel is going to obviously be up when I can report that here next year. So, I'm sorry, 30,000 gallons, I just spoke myself. Fuel costs then last year was 114,0218, of which I anticipate that to be quite a bit higher this year because of the cost of diesel. So he does not my staff, I am very proud of my staff, I am glad I have so many people here tonight to stand behind me. If it wasn't for my staff, I wouldn't be here today either. So I'm very thankful. I have taught my CPL for 33 years now. It is not a license to take lightly. I don't know how many of you know what goes into holding a CPL, but there's a lot of things that go into it, right down to the size of your neck. So the amount you weigh in comparison to your height, CPAC machines, all sorts of things go into maintaining your CPL. So it's important to understand not only is it difficult to hire a driver, but to maintain a driver and the oops that they have to go through. I have hired a new dispatcher this year, her name is Carissa, unfortunately she's not here tonight. We have our mechanic, Pete, through the introductions here. We have a couple flex drivers, Carol and Kay, and we have a couple trip drivers who are veteran parents of our students that play sports. So Chad Allen and Derek Maxson, I'm in the process of hiring one more. We just received his office letter yesterday, or offer letter. So I'm hoping that maybe we can pick up some more sporting events or transport some of those who are currently having parents drive, et cetera. So our fleet replacement schedule, I believe you guys have seen this last year, we did just recently sell a bus that was non-operable. Somebody in Texas bought it, they came and they towed it away with another school bus that they bought in Michigan. That was very unique to me and it was quite interesting to see them rush into Boston, try to get it going. They knew that it did not run and then to see them ultimately hook up a tow bar, I'm not real sure what you call it exactly, to the back of a month of a school bus and tow it away down transportation drive while middle school was getting out of school. So I cannot believe we didn't have any parents calling in that or anything or considering citizens because it to me looked illegal as illegal can be. So we do have one bus right now that I actually sent in to go on the auction block. Sent that into HR today for finance and that bus, we're anticipating to get a very good dollar out of it. It is running and, you know, to be ready. We have another bus that we're working on, has one or two repairs to it and it will be equally as valuable to itself. So that's the bus up there. We did get our two new buses on the road a month ago. They've been great and thanks to my mechanic, he installed the cameras on it and it's rolling down the road. So it's really nice to bring the buses and we definitely appreciate it. I have a quick update. We're going to be getting software for transportation. Currently, we use Excel spreadsheets, which is a little old school. Our software will include routing software, which will make things a lot easier, we'll find the most economical way to go on trips in routes, pick up our students, write them inside drop offs or pickups. There will be tablets installed in the buses, which hopefully will promote hiring because the tablets will read the buzzer up to you, which is beneficial. It will tell you when you're getting close to the student's house, it will tell you where their thermal tracks, things like that. I think it's going to be a great asset to the district. We are also getting, along with that, GPS, which is called Geotab. And this has several different features to it. One is going to, when our buses have any kind of lights on, dash lights, hazard lights on the dashboard in the engine problem or something, my mechanic is going to be able to review what that error is right by, just like that. So he can tell the bus whether we should proceed on or whether we have to harp and look for a subdriver to come on. So this will have state of the art navigation with it as well. We are excited about that. It will be a dark screen while the driver's driving, so there's no distractions. Dispatch will be able to send messages to the driver, which the tablet will read to them the next time they stop. So it will not be any kind of a distraction or anything like that. I'm very much looking forward to that. For the future, Matt was saying that we're going to be getting it, but it does offer a parent application, which will tell the parent basically when the bus is going to be there, where the bus is at, where your student is at. Those are some things that I would like to look for into the future, but with our initial software, that part is not included. So we are diligently working on assembling routes right now. Myself, my dispatcher, my mechanic, and my router are going through live trainings two to three times a week with Tyler Technologies. So we are learning fresh something new every day. I guess it's been a bit of a challenge to fit it in our schedule, but we're making it happen. Another update that I have done is our maintenance department, electrician has installed a timer and a thermostat. Currently, we plug all of our buses in during the winter time in this timer and thermostat from 4:00 AM to 6:30 AM. If it's below 20 degrees, it will power up the outlets, in which in turn will run the blockers, which warms up the antifreeze, which also makes it easier for the engine to start in the morning. This also makes the antifreeze warmer for the interior bus heating. So it will be shut off on weekends, including Thanksgiving, the two weeks over holiday break, and spring break, thus saving the district money. The cost for this unit to install was $1,212.23. In the past, if the bus was plugged in, it was drawing electricity all the time. Typically, the bus would be plugged in from the end of November through March 1st and I anticipate recouping the $1,212.23 within the first year. I put some notes down there. I've worked with Consumers Energy to figure out the cost of kilowatts per hour, then a bus is plugged in. We have 11 route buses plugged in, 11 hours a day, seven days a week, eight trip. And spare buses plugged in for 24 hours, seven days a week. The approximate cost for that was $4,690 last year. With our new system, I anticipate our electric costing about $1,500. So we will have double that amount of savings in the first year. Our 20 degrees, we're not exactly set on that quite yet. We're still running some numbers and figures on when those buses need to be officially wired to electricity. So I'm pretty excited about that savings there. I have added a Facebook page for Mount Pleasant Transportation. It's in its very beginning stages. My plan is to put on there weather delays, weather cancellations, group stops, pick up some drop offs. Those are our toughest ones to reach every single parent. If you're picking up 47 kids at, say, Jamestown, for example, it's pretty hard to reach 47 parents when you're making your phone calls out. So as the year progresses on, I want to get the transportation webpage marketed, along with any packets and handouts that we do from the school at the beginning of the year so I can refer parents to that. We bought a hundred carat power washer this year. We've provided safety glasses to all of our staff. As you can imagine, our roads associated towards rose bush area, the dirt and the brine and the stones get kind of clogged up in underneath there. And this power washing unit, you roll it right underneath the bus and it sprays up and cleans all of the underside of the bus, which is great for when my mechanic needs to work on a bus, he can have a little bit clearer view of what's going on underneath it when it's on twice. As far as hiring goes, I did participate in Isabella County Fair this year. I had a booth there all weekend, all week long, from 12 to 7 daily. I had to put a few flyers there for myself, special ed, some different programs there. Next year, I plan on getting a little bit better, you know, work hiring type banner, drawing some people, if you draw on kids and you draw on their classmates too. And so I do plan on having some upgrades to that next year. I had not hired anybody out there, but I did check on my drivers, come to the fair for an interview that she applied online. So I thought that was true dedication to come, pay to the fair, stop and then have a chat. So I really enjoyed that as she is here tonight. So something my mechanic is working on is the economy mode on the bus. There's a switch that you can either have the economy mode on or off. We are finding that improves the fuel economy. My numbers have changed just a little bit because every day somebody turns a new slip in, so these numbers aren't quite 100% on. As of, when I type this up, my first five buses reported an average savings of .34 miles, .34 miles per gallon. .34 miles a gallon. I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but if you figure out our whole year savings, that is $5,093. We are finding our two newer buses have even a better economy mode savings on it, so we'll see those numbers go up significantly and so that's been a great thing to do some research on. So as of updates or anything, that's all I have. Again, I am very glad to be here, so I appreciate all of your questions.
Thank you, that was very nice. You did a great job.
Thank you.
The second only question I had was regarding the new technology that you presented, the tablets and the Geotab. Do we have any thoughts on what builds up a new clear pace?
So we've kind of heard a couple different dates. The understanding that we have with the routing software and things like that, we're talking about probably live by spring break. I am hoping live and clean by '24, so '24 school year. Along with those tablets, we'll have RFID reader cards where the students will scan on and off. I forgot to mention that. It's what's going to happen with that, is they will scan on and off the bus. And so when a parent calls and they can't find Johnny Smith or something like that, which does happen, we will be able to present exactly where Johnny Smith is at or he got on the bus. A lot of times when parents call to check on their students, their principals and what that are beyond human buildings, and so we're their only form of communication. So that is going to pose a bit of a challenge to your lower elementary students, but I think with a little understanding, I think it would be great in the tablet technology program to skip the card if needed, so nobody's going to be denied right, so.
Sounds like it would be helpful to you.
I'm excited.
I know you said maybe not, but even the future for the parent app, like track, it seems like that would be helpful in a lot of some calls that you're getting and just spreading things.
Think in today's world, maybe push your mind a little. Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank you so much for finding some efficiencies and cost savings.
Thank you.
That's fantastic to see. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda this evening is our financial audit presentation. So we do have a guest here with us from Yale to Yale. Jamie, thank you for being here. So Jamie Rovet is here with us from Yo and Yo. Jamie, thank you for being here.
So I'll just pull up my presentation. I'll just quickly go over. You should have a copy of the audit financial statements in front of you. And you get the personal version tonight, so it'll be, we're not going to go over this booklet here, but this is the audit financial statement. Then you also have a report that is listed to this in portrait. This is the single audit that comes with federal expenditures. And then there's a lease lease letter. I'll touch on that, too. But today, we're just going to go over the highlights, which is a core of my presentation. Maybe you should all have a copy of that on your computer, so that was emailed out. So just real quick to introduce myself, there are some new faces in the audience here. My name is Jamie Rovet. I'm an audit partner at Yo and Yo CPAs. And we are your independent auditor that comes on site and performs your annual audit, which talks about on this first slide here is really the reason that we do the audit is number one, MDE requires it. So Michigan Department of Ed requires every school and district in the state of Michigan to have an annual audit done. And it really is the responsibility of management to have the financial information prepared and ready for us. And it needs to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And as your auditors, what happens is my team and I familiar with the audit that information presented. And on this slide, you can see the district was issued an unmodified opinion, which means there are no material modifications that need to be made to those financial statements. And then everything was recorded fairly and it's the highest level of assurance offered. So now we'll talk about some of the numbers. And again, just a reminder, this is as of June thirtieth, which is the fiscal year end of the school. We have your major funds here, your general fund. And then this year, the twenty twenty-two capital projects fund is the major fund. And then the third column there is all your other funds combined into one column. So just real quick, that's your food service, the self-sustaining stores, bookstore, candy service, student and school activity funds, your two capital projects funds, and then your three debt funds. They're all included in that column. Because there's not a lot of activity that flows through them, those are all combined into one. So we focus on the first column there, your general fund. And you can see you have assets of a little over eighteen point one million. And the majority of that is made up of receivable due from other governments, which is really your July and state date that hasn't come in as of June thirtieth, which you're entitled. And we record that for July and August into that fiscal year, which is about five point nine million. We also have federal grants and some dollars that have been requested ahead of every CPE from the RESD, which total about three point one million. And those are really just timing issues as to when the district receives that. And then you have cash also included in the assets there, about seven point six million. Then moving down, we have liabilities of about six point two million. And that's made up of things such as accrued expenditures at the end of the year, which is your, based on your retirement bills that we just have to pay yet. Accrued salaries payable, which is about one point seven million of that total. And then also we have some unearned revenue this year, about one point four million. And this really is some state aid dollars that are restricted for specific purposes. And then those haven't been performed yet, those are the unearned revenue. So your fund balance for general fund is about eleven point nine million. Capital projects fund, everything in that, your assets there is all cash. And then we have some accounts payable of about two point two million. And then your fund balance is seventeen point five million. So the next slide then shows just the same now. We have a now looking at the revenue and expenditures related to them. And basically, we'll focus on the third row there, which is the change in fund balance. So your general fund had an increase in fund balance of about one point seven million. Your capital projects fund had an increase of five point five million. Now remember, that is anticipated, that is what that fund is for. So when you go out and you get the bonds for those capital projects, all that revenue comes in. And then as those projects are completed and then they're paid, that reduces that. So you do typically have expenditures that are more than the revenue after that initial year. So we'll continue to see this decrease every year. So it's a core purpose of the capital projects. And then your non-major government funds had a change of about four hundred and thirty thousand in there, which as I said, is a combination of all those additional funds. On this next slide, then I have a graph that we've been charting. It shows your general fund balances as a percentage of expenditures. And there's a couple of different ways to calculate this. So I take total fund balance and divide it by your total general funding expenditures. And that is where you get the twenty-three point one-six percent. However, there are items within the fund balance that you can spend on operations. So when we pull those items out, that actually gets you down to about twenty-one point two percent. That's pulling out some of those items that are restricted inside. And then even if we go further and pull out again the non-spendables, so those things are like prepaid items, that percent drops down to seventeen point six percent. Now MDE, a few years ago, had put out a recommendation that they recommend that healthy district could have that percentage between fifteen to twenty percent. So both of the calculations, you guys are right in line with what MDE would recommend as a healthy fund balance. The next couple of slides now are looking at your original budget, your final budget, and then what actually happened. And I do want to point out that this pulls out the tribal grants. And we have a slide on that. So if you're wondering why these numbers don't tie in exactly what I said before, there's a reason for that. Since we pulled out the tribal grants on this one. So the first column is really your best guess for the information you have. That budget was adopted by the board in June of twenty twenty-two, so prior to this year that this audit offered. So just remember that. So at that time, the best guess was we were going to have expenditures exceeding our revenue of about one point four million. And as we know, things happen during the year. You know, we have the state coming out with some financial information. A lot of it you don't know about until after the fact. And so you're like, you're constantly chasing your tail and trying to get your revenues and your expenditures in line. So then throughout the year, there are a bunch of amendments. That's the second column. So I would say this is the best guess, closest to your year and closest to June thirtieth. And then the third column is what actually happened. So we can see then we found we're going to be closer to about two hundred thousand. And then we do typically budget conservatively, the end, a couple of things. One is we were told to, MDE had set the budget that you're going to spend all of the grant dollars that you got, which was a change from the way they had it previously. So that increases the expenditures here. And then also the retirements, too, was budgeted at the highest level. Not everybody has the highest level of percent. So that's probably for some of the fluctuation in the expenditures budget versus the actual. Now the next slide then is the tribal grants. So this one looks a little funky, I always say, but the original budget, we don't really know what the revenue or expenditures are going to be. And so it's always been just zero budgeted for that. And then what happens is for the revenue, it's based on current year contributions. So that four hundred and five thousand is based on the current year contributions. And then the expenditures, because really you do not hear exactly all of those grants that are going to be spent during the year. So they budget that all of them will be spent. So that's why that expenditures budget for tribal grants is significantly higher than what actually happens, because you don't always know if you're putting the requests to and some information to make sure that it's in line with what the tribal grant is given for, before you can recognize that as a revenue expenditure. So actually, for the year, we had a net change in fund balance of about forty thousand dollars. Here we have just a quick comparison to the prior year for your general fund. This is summary. So looking at revenue compared to last year, and expenditures compared to last year. And both of them increased about four point seven million. And the major reason that the revenue increased was that there was additional state aid funding this year. We know all the districts received that one ten, one forty-seven C money. And then there were additional funding for mental health and school safety. So that increased your revenue. And that also has a direct correlation to the expenses, because that's what you're spending those dollars on, too. So then we saw increases while in your expenditures of almost exactly the same dollar amount. Here's just a snapshot. I always say it's a, I like to see a picture instead of trying to beat numbers across. It could be just a little bit easier to see. We have a visual picture here of where your general fund revenue is coming from. So you can see this gray portion here is about sixty-one percent of your total general fund revenue is coming from your state aid dollars, with then local coming in at about twenty-six percent. So that includes things as property tax dollars, as like these admissions and also contributions. And when I looked at last year, so we're within a couple percent of what that allocation was last year, too. So the revenue sources are very similar to what they were last year as well. The same type of graph here, a pie chart that we have, and now we're looking at expenditures, so the money going out of the district. And sixty-two percent is in destruction, which includes items such as elementary, middle school, high school, and these adult continuing head. And now we have supporting services, too, which is thirty-four percent. Again, I pulled this chart from last year and both of them were within one or two percent of what you were. And I know in the past, you've asked me, how does that compare to a district, similar district our size? So I did pull that up, too. And so another district that's very similar is within five percent of the allocation between the two. So the way that you are spending the dollars is right in line with other districts that are similar size. And by size, we do mean memberships, your people count that you have. So the next couple of slides then are your bond progress. So you guys have kind of a lot of activity going on. The twenty sixteen bond progress, that one is completed. So the revenue and expenditures are the exact same. You spent all the money, that sum now is zero fund balance. And the bond audit was completed back in twenty twenty. The twenty twenty bond progress, we have revenue to date of about four point one million, with expenditures about two point six million. So we have about one point six million left in cash that you'll be spending. And that's not exactly the difference, because we have some accounts handled with things that have been booked, too. So that bond was started in February of twenty twenty. And then you also have your twenty twenty-two bond progress, which started in February of twenty twenty-two. We have revenue to date of almost twenty-five million. And expenditures related to that bond project is about seven point four million. So the last couple of slides, I have, in addition to doing a financial statement audit, as your auditors, we're also required to get an understanding of your internal controls. So we do spend a lot of time bugging the finance office. And we're on site for about a week. And we go through the different policies and procedures that are in place and looking at, you know, receipts, persons payroll, CMI, scapping, capital assets. We go through all of that. And request a lot of documentation and then go in and sit and have them kind of walk us through their process, too. So in relation to that, we're happy to know we did not identify any material inefficiency related to the internal controls. Now I pointed out earlier, you have this thinner copy. So in addition to doing a financial statement audit, because the district does receive more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal dollars, the federal government also requires you to have what they call a single audit. And that is specifically based on the federal programs that you get. And we go through this big calculation to determine which ones we have to test. So you had about five thirty million in federal expenditures for the year. And we audited about three point four million of that, or sixty percent. We did audit two major programs this year, your child nutrition cluster, as well as the Esther grant dollars, too. And that is federal grant guideline driven. It's very compliant. There's yes or no. There's no gray area there. Again, you guys have received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level assurance offered. We do not have any comments or recommendations regarding the single audit as well. The governance letter, which is this new sleeve here, just talks about there was a new change this year. I mean, you probably remember we stand up here talking about leases last year. So they now have this new one that come out. And instead of leases, it's dealing with IT arrangements. So big software, big online learning programs. So the finance office spent a lot of time just gathering all that information for us. And there were probably a clarity of fifty of them. So we had to check this new PSC, so the governmental accounting standard board, says we now need to record those if they are material. So in this letter, you'll see on the bottom of page two, that you had a couple. And they were within the threshold that we said they're not material, but they were large enough that we wanted to point them out. So we passed posting the entries. So when you read that, it's not a bad thing. It just means we did not post the entry. We did not add the additional footnotes. We did not add all this additional work. And that's fine. And I would say the majority of my districts are also passing on it, because it's a lot of additional work for, I'm not sure what benefit you mean, but we're following the rules, so. A couple of future challenges that I'm sure you're all aware of, too, is just, you know, the unknown foundational ladder, a lot of stupid counts, funding changes, all those red, the red tape and the hoops you gotta jump through with all those federal grant dollars. And then we have the pension OKEP obligations, too, which, you know, those significantly change year to year based on the markets. And so when the market is not very good, your liability goes up, too. So you'll see a pretty large swing from last year, but who knows what next year will bring and make the swing the opposite way. I did look at that district that I've been comparing you to that is similar in size. So your pension obligation was eighty-six point two million and theirs was over ninety-four million. And then your OKEP obligation is four point seven and theirs was five point five. So again, you guys are bearing out a little bit better when it comes to the pie or pension and OKEP. So that really concludes my presentation. I just want to thank Ginger and her team for their professionalism and their help. It's a lot of work to get this done and out the door on time. And, you know, we send Dr. Asher, we tie every single number. We have different meetings and conversations to make sure that we're on the same page. So we do really appreciate her and her team. I mean, we're here and we show up, too. So are there any questions that I could answer for you?
Sure. A couple of things. One is, so we have a sister project, federal funded SAMSSA program for our air project. How is that, within our system, when the dollars go from the tribal SAMSSA grant comes in to cover the costs within the district, where we're expensing those?
I'll let Ginger handle that one.
It's a federal grant, so it's recorded under all of the grant.
Perfect. Thank you. The other question is, what work do we do, Yo and Yo do, for our sister organizations that are associated with the school district and auditing? Or do we have, how is that in this auditing process? Is there a component to that? Or is that not something that comes under what Yo and Yo does with our auditing process?
Give me an example of what you call a sister.
A non-entity that's not part of the district, but provides all the services and support that the district has to provide.
So we do look at those if, two things. Number one is material to the financial statements. And number two, if we call it service organizations, what we call it. So if that service organization is making decisions on your behalf. So sometimes we have like, let me think of an example, like a bank is doing your investing for you. So if you're using like an investment manager, where you are giving them the ability to sell, you know, sell some of your stocks or bonds and make those moves around to help you, you know, with your realized and unrealized gains, then you're relying on them to make those decisions. So then what we do is we go through a process of what is the monitoring, what is the control that the district is doing to make sure that that service organization is also following all of the rules and that they have good internal controls as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you. It's always nice to see everything in my documents. And I, it just helps. I think it's nice for everybody to be able to see. So thank you, Ginger, for all you do and for your office. I think that's a lot of work.
I would just feel like to add, thanks for the comparative data. That helped me a lot. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you, Jamie.
So just so the public knows, one, we don't have a service organization that is investing our funds for us. Just to verify that, two. So I'll repeat that. So we don't have a financial organization that is investing our funds for us. So without all the shoes explaining, we do not have that. The other thing I want to know is, we as a board have talked that we're going to be using this audit and learning more about how the financial districts work. As you can hear, it's a lot of very complex. As you can hear, it's a lot of very complex information, very intertwined. These documents are very, very, very helpful. You can get a lot of information, they will be on our website. And so you can too enjoy these pages of numbers and things. But as a team, we've talked about that's something that we want to learn that more about and get better at understanding a lot of what you just represented, because the detail, there's a significant amount more in here that really helps us to support and guide the districts. And that's why I want everyone to know that we've made a concerted effort to get better at understanding details of this. But Yo and Yo has been our honor for many, many years, and they've done an excellent job in helping us with the information and answering our questions even before we ask them. Thank you for breaking down.
So if I'm a member of our community and I'm looking for an audit on our website?
So when you go onto the main page of our website, there is a icon that comes over that says transparency and reporting. You click on that, all of our financial information will be uploaded absolutely as we need to work through our audit this evening. But not only is it for this year, but multiple years, all of our historical data is there. So you'll see the little icon that's got the shape of the state of the ship comes on, and you click there, it's all right there. So next we'll move into Ginger's audit.
Yes, so I tend to try to put the numbers together in a format that we're used to seeing, all the same numbers, just jumping around in different order, just to keep you on your toes. But I would also like to thank Jamie and her team because they are great to work with. Seems like every year there's going to be something that we have to work through together to figure out. Yes, they're really great about calling me down, and I call their email and figure out about something. They're like, oh, no, it's not that, because the thing I mentioned that she pointed out, that sounds horrible, but it's not. So they're really great at working through all of these issues with us, and we have a great working relationship. It really is a good partnership. So I have put together just a few quick slides here for you for looking at fund balance versus general fund with tribal grants. Looking at our beginning fund balance to our ending, showing the net increase of one point seven million dollars, which is a great, fantastic thing to have. It then shows what percentage of that is general fund, and then the tribal grants, all that did decrease in tribal grants, which we want, we want to spend those grants down to save the capital. A breakdown of that eleven point ten million dollar fund balance. There's one hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars in the inventory. So this is your security, your time supply of gloves that you have in the warehouse, that can't use for three tests, or there's one person in the district that uses them to spend the night. On top of that, there are expenditures, our GI tech program is building a house. So we want to make sure that we report the expenditures for the house in the year we sell it. We did not sell it prior to two-year, so we maybe the expenditures are two-year in the inventory. The year that we sell the house, then we can back out to the expense of the revenue makes us to learn this in there. Prepaid items are small amounts, like conference registrations, maybe a moved-in affair that we needed to pay for in four-July, we didn't pay for a wire through that. Different things like that that we have to pay in last fiscal year, but they're really for the current fiscal years, so we record as expenditures in this fiscal year. The tribal grants outside, that's all of the other tribal grants that we got here. Building at the current expenditures are the net accumulation of our regular community alternative programs. And also the accounts that you have approved carryover. So our curriculum, I guess, we just ended the maintenance to the list. So all of those leftover budgets that you have allowed to carryover, and we set aside in our fund balances, so we can add it back into the expenditures in the next fiscal year. Subsequent years expenditure generally have the four approved to spend into fund balance for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget that we're concluding. And then on the side is the second one. So I love to take that number and break it out as naturally usable fund balance. We already paid for the important part, paid for the unpaid. So I also take out the tribal grants because I like to give a real good idea sometimes those score our fund balance number in a good way. It's extra grant funded, we have to spend, so we wouldn't have to, so it's amazing. But if you like to look at what our actual general fund numbers are with all those tribal grants, and that is the ten going down, basically, as a percentage of our total expenditures for the year, it's ninety point seven point nine, so again, kind of like, we look at it in some different ways, but I try to break it down, what do we have to spend? That's an increase of one point four percent on expenditures. And then I just kind of look at the market's actual comparison for general fund, of the tribal grants. It ended up being over budgeted by about two million dollars. This is, this is because of the other, other one in the district to help conserve your budget. So I just tonight, think what the transportation department is doing to help conserve the budget and, you know, make this a little bit more tangible. Everyone in the district is doing that. There's so many department budgets and office budgets that are kind of set for the year that are not fully set, and that's, I think, a great thing because it's just contributing back into fund balance. We know that we have a lot of grant dollars right now that will be in next year this time. So there's this fiscal lift that we keep talking about, and this is really setting us up for success when it happens. So just to those to everybody in the district, everybody that you saw up here tonight, everybody is doing their work to help save money. I just, I appreciate that a lot of the things I got to do here. But so Jamie talked about this a lot, I don't know that I'll need to really break it down too much, but revenues and expenditures were over budgeted. A lot of it is also because we do budget the entire grant set recently, like SR three is five point one grand. We didn't even want to spend a lot of money here, we recorded the entire budget for revenue and expenditures. So when you look at that, the area is based on the fifty-eight point six million dollar expenditure budget that we have. It's a ninety-six point five percent after. I don't know if you're closer than that, but I still think that's pretty good, a fifty-eight million dollar budget. And again, that's everybody in the district doing their part. Just breaking that number down, I wanted to look really deep and see building department budgets that weren't under spent. It's one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Sellers are down, that's what's in this one. Jamie had mentioned at the presentation, we do budget everybody right now, their retirement, their salary, at the highest level. But not everybody contributes, has selected that highest level to the back end to the term. We're holding us to get closer and closer as we get live in our title of this year, payroll software. Once I can figure out how to do budgeting, and more training on that, we should be able to do all of that in the software itself, and we should get closer and closer. You can see there's just, there's a lot of stuff that we talked about, the activity brackets, you can just have some budgeting taken out at them, really whatever the carryovers, as I mentioned earlier, and just a whole bunch of these utilities, fuel, you know, just a whole bunch of just things stacked together to give that extra one point one.
It's really good to hear that our fund balance is almost trying to spend up our budget, so you have. I mean, it's excellent to see that fiscal responsibility we're talking about, and so I hope it's me tonight. And I mean, to know that we're sitting so well, to get as we use plan for our district.
I'd love to comment. So for years, we've always stressed about October because we would not get our soup made dollars. We'd always be wondering whether we had enough money, or whether we had, whether we would make ourselves a payroll. And so the past couple of years, we did not have that. So thank you, this is making a lot of people, a lot of hard work to just stabilize and to build funds. So we don't have this by hand, of course. This is for many, many years, that was, this was an extremely stressful time. You know what we'd have catch to keep operating. It's just the way the state funds us. So great news, thank you. And much like the bus, the details, the system that you're building to make it even more accurate, it's very helpful to go through a very complex, very complex budget and take on people, contracts, the deliverables. That's pretty good, that's how it is, and we're still working for implementing that program. It's a powerful tool, the powerful tools are off the cart. So thank you for all that work, and your whole team, nice, great team, so. That wasn't a question, sorry.
So we will move on in our agenda, and then we will come back to the audit under your business, and we'll add support to it with the audits. Thank you, Jamie, thank you, Ginger. The next item under my report is our look at policies. Please give me a minute to pull up our policies this evening. So this evening, excuse me, as we continue our looking at policies, we are looking at the forty-two-hundred section of policies. And that is our section that is focused on employee conduct and ethics. It starts with forty-two-oh-one, which is the employee ethics and standards. I don't know if anyone had any thoughts or wanted to share anything on this particular policy.
That's the only one we've tonight of the bunch that we read, because we read quite a bit. It was a big section, where I felt that introductory paragraph would be nice to soften. I don't think it's necessary on any of the other rules after that. And so I can read the suggestion I have, I'm not attached to any of the specific wording, but something along the line of, an effective district requires the service of employees of integrity, high ideals, and human understanding. To maintain and promote these essentials, employees are expected to, and then we move into our own wording, which is model high standards of behaviors at all times, et cetera. This is something I saw in the whole district. That started kind of the same theme, the whole ethics section, and I thought it was a very nice, just a little bit softening, considering that often for ethics, the first one, the first policy would be the only one that people need at the beginning. That's, that was my guess.
Other thoughts on that policy? Is everyone comfortable with that paragraph that we just read?
As long as it says, you know, there's conversation going on.
I want me to see what truth says, and if they think some of the wording, and really not attached to any of the words, I just want to soften the beginning. And if they want us to change or tweak the wording, that's what we're gonna find.
So we'll lean through that first paragraph here, are you seeking to, what you suggest to replace that? Do you want to start with that?
Add one sentence before.
Just before what they ask.
Yep, and then that, well, I guess it's a sentence and a half, but that moves into what we have, which I'm, I'm also. Yet when, and then it merges when it's a tribal life sentence with the figures.
So we're not really taking anything away from that, so we're just adding a little bit, sort of like we talked about two weeks ago with that kind of introduction. In case folks only go directly to this policy and don't read some of those introductory notes of the forty-two-hundreds.
So maybe for the public, I can read what it starts with. Our current policy, the way it is before, edits with the employees must act professionally, and model high standards, et cetera. So they just soften that in the words. Does that make sense?
Is everyone agree with that suggestion? Okay, then we will move on. So you do see in the forty-two-hundreds, you do see some administrative guidelines? Yeah, just rolling down to get there, sorry. Forty-two-oh-one AG, that's tied in advert reporting. Much of this is tied back to federal grants, and we're part of this for federal grants. Does anyone have any changes or suggestions on this section? So then the next section is forty-two-oh-two, children's protective services reporting on student safety and welfare. Straight forward, okay. Next is forty-two-oh-three, corporal punishment and limited use of reasonable force. I know there were some questions, just as I read the shared document that we really been working on, looking at. You know, training for staff, what we offer. Certainly, I think it's important to know that all of our administrators and the majority of our special education staff are all trained in a technique that's called CPI, which is crisis prevention intervention. So that really works focusing on de-escalation techniques. It also does work on restraint that is very sparingly used, but they have the appropriate training to be able to use that. Anytime restraint is used in a school, there are a variety of different documents that are completed and then they're kept on file with our special education department. So that's all reported out back to the state at the end of the year. So I did read some of those comments asking about CPI and that kind of training at the end of the day today. So I will read those documents and share them with you. But I just want you to know, number one, yes, our staff is all trained. Our staff that would be moved into those kinds of difficult situations. And then number two, anytime anything like that happens, it is thorough.
So Jennifer, if a student needs to, and it's not a special education, is there any differences there with that? Or there's staff that, or special education staff that?
So our administrative staff would not be special education staff. Our behavior interventionists are not special education staff. So the document is a special education document that we use, but it would be moralized the same way. So it just would be kept on file with the special education staff.
The same technique?
Exactly, the same, yeah. Really focusing on de-escalating the situation.
The comment I had is for the attached piece of this policy, so forty-two-oh-three AG is the list of alternatives that it's basically the district provides. And I wondered if we could update this for ransom restorative practices? It felt like, it was a little bit of this national, this is nice, but it didn't have quite some of these things that we've heard a lot all year from that restorative practice. And I wondered, and I know it might take some time for folks to update it, so I wonder if we have to pull back the policy toward this update? But maybe in the next six months, make it, a little bit what, what we've been doing? Or maybe, I think it might be just adding to the list.
And remember that an administrative guideline is more of our own document, so we can even spend some time with our administrative leadership team looking at what alternatives are we using? How are we de-escalating situations in different ways and add to this list?
I know we've heard so many great practices that we've been doing that I didn't find in the list. And I understand that the list is ultimately, it's not meant to be complete. I'm glad I thought of the next.
Any other comments on these two sections? Okay, then we'll move on to forty-two-oh-four. Administrative guideline. And forty-two-oh-four is confidentiality of student information. Pretty straightforward, okay. Forty-two-oh-five, hiring and background checks.
At some point, so our district follows a training that is more beyond equity, that is offered by the Mission Association, a superintendence association. And they had recommended at the time, adding to our job ads or job posts a statement that explains the fact that we are of indigenous land. And I don't know if that is the base in a policy where people do something like this and they standardize. I don't know if it belonged to that, I guess. But that section did cover hiring and had the section, I think it was a section K on job posts. So I wondered if that would be appropriate.
We certainly could do that. My one thought with the suggestion was, rather than trying to crack something new, would that be an appropriate place to use our already more approved Indigenous land acknowledgement statement? And we might want to maybe use that as a basis, and maybe add a couple sentences to that, because this is more specific to hiring. But I feel like that, that's a statement that we worked on a long time, we vetted together. And so maybe to use that as a basis, and to add that to our postings, that could just be a practice that we do without even having it in policy. But certainly, I agree with you that that section, forty-two-oh-five A, would make the most sense to add something along those lines, that it would be just, you know, there. And really illustrate the pride of it.
And that's it, and I think it's not such a loud message of not much we do value beside that we are indigenous land, and I, I will, I don't know how that works, I think you're right. Having our indigenous land statement that we did work and got vetted and worked hard with. and worked hard with the tribe to make sure it was in English they wanted, it feels nice. I don't know how that looks in a job post. If it's a new thing, I have to pick or like something that's not quite there, then we might lose that message. And so I just don't know how we position it in a way that is really fun, et cetera. And if anybody else...
Can we just insert that language into this core policy here? That, I mean, something very simple, like after the paragraph that's there, all postings will include the following Indigenous land acknowledgement statement. And then just make sure that every posting that is sent out by the Human Resources Office has that same language. So it's in the policy and then it's also reflected on posting. I feel like that would be pretty easy to implement. I don't know if we want to look at that to, like, to look on our agenda to see if there's something additional that we wanted to add to that? Or if we feel like this statement, it certainly reflects our values. Would this be something that we want to add as is onto our postings? Or do you want to change it some?
It seems to me that kind of what was proposed, I agree with you to make sure it's very well thought out. But kind of what you worded here, Willie, this is, we have a deep commitment to honoring and learning about the Nation of Peoples that we expect from our employees. That's a little different than just a statement. So I think it would require thought and time. But what I'm understanding from it is saying we want people to know as a kind that this is something we value and a commitment to growing in learning versus just acknowledging and laying this out. Does that...
I agree. I mean, I'm not sure the commitment. I don't know how we worded. I wasn't, whenever with the statement, with those sentences you read, I can read it from the audience. I can't see our document. Our district is located on the ancestral lands of the Council of the Three Fires, the Nation of Peoples, of whom the site and article one nation is one. As such, we have a deep commitment to honoring and learning about the Nation of Peoples that we expect from all our employees. The word I got stuck on was expect. I don't know. I think I'm guessing Trin is not going to like this. I like the phrase, "Kitty, baby, we have a commitment." And that is really what we after. So I agree that we could have our land acknowledgement statement and then maybe add a sentence that kind of announces the fact that we are expecting that. But maybe...
I thought you said we expected it. I think so. So in the landfill that we currently have, we can simply say at the last sentence, we feel it is important for staff to understand the longstanding history of this land and seem to understand our relationship to that history.
Yep.
Did we do it?
All right. And for employees instead of staff, but yep.
So maybe we feel it is important for all employees to understand it? So we'll add the whole statement with that slight change. And does everyone think that that's okay to do it as a second paragraph under A? Does that make sense?
Yep.
And I know Vanessa could not be here today, but it would be lovely for her to be able to comment on this and see how she feels.
Was there anything else that anyone wanted to talk about under, on policy forty-two-oh-five? So forty-two-oh-five, AG, is the criminal justice, information, and security. That is all the information for our background checks. Linda is our Lasso. And we have training with Michigan State Police regularly. Linda works closely with Heather Prevo in our business office on all of our fingerprinting and background checking.
Question. Do we have, this may not be the best location for this. Do we do kind of background checks on a random, regular basis? Is there a schedule? Or do we only do it upon hiring?
Only upon hiring, however, if there's an issue, we would be able to call it in. So we would be alerted.
Yes, I have a question and you probably... Is this the same thing for substance abuse, like the random testing? Is that only when... I'll wait until we get to the right box. I don't want to repeat it.
So we're good with, yeah, okay. So then forty-two-oh-six, Employee Contrabandments. I'm good too. I wasn't sure if that'd say hand raised or... Forty-two-oh-seven, Third-Party Contrabandment of Non-Instructional Support Services. Good, good. Forty-two-oh-eight, Advocate Employee Criminal Arrest and Charge Conviction. I think that goes to, Tim's question there. And this is all really direct out of the Vice School Code. Forty-two-oh-nine.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question. Forty-two-oh-eight, that's the first time I saw the wording "tenured teacher" used under Section D. I didn't know, I didn't find it in our definitions. And maybe I didn't just see it. And I wondered if we should define at that point, is used throughout the policy.
Let me make a note, let me go back and review that. Because I mean, that would not be, the definition of a tenured teacher would not be for us to define. I would think that Trin would have defined it somewhere else in our policy. But I can't, right now, I don't know if that's back in the eleven-hundreds. But let us do some research on that and then I can bring that back to you.
It might be worth just re-stating that. It's not used anywhere else in that forty-two-hundred section.
Okay.
I just wanted to, on this one, there's like a personal restraining order. If someone has, do you think that we need to be reported there as well?
If an employee has a...
Yeah, because they're supposed to just close.
Right. I don't, I don't believe it's a legal requirement for an employee to tell us if someone has a restraining order against them unless it's someone that is in the school building. Is that be right?
Yeah, it's all complicated. I don't think that's... Sometimes that comes to our attention and we don't really have jurisdiction over that. And we sometimes get involved to be supportive of that. I just, I think what I was reading just brought, some of those things just came to mind that could come up. I mean, just that people would know what they need to come from formally.
So in Section C, it's pretty clear that the listed offenses are defined in the Vice School Code. So that is what they are required to report. So that's that reference to MCL twenty-eight point seven-two-two. So that is their legal requirement to report a listed offense.
And we're, are there people who've seen that?
The Vice Post code is on the state Michigan website. And it's, and I don't know that I would say it's, I mean, it's there. I don't know how easy it is to navigate and to read, but that's where it would be housed.
I just, I just click Google and it comes right up. It's pretty straightforward. And it's not actually too, it's long, but it's pretty clear.
A restraining order is like a civil court order. It's not a law. It's a federal process.
So we'll keep moving to forty-two-oh-nine, the prohibition against worship of girls in assistance. Again, that is straight out of state law. That one. Forty-two-ten is the drug and alcohol-free workplace tobacco product restrictions. Is that a good question?
Yeah, I did. I, I mean, with the fact that tobacco has such strong cultural ties with the Nation of Peoples, I wanted to see if we could have under, so where we fit that in our policies. And it seems like this would be the section. Tobacco products are defined under B four. And then it has its own section under C five with a couple of bullet points. And I thought adding the exceptions on how tobacco can be used with that cultural setting would be where it belongs. I didn't know how to work any of this. And so I went to the Housat Marie District. And they have a whole section. I couldn't relate to exactly that policy. It wasn't letting me relate. But they have different wording and exemptions for these cultural usage. And everything is being clearly stated, it must be supervised. It's not just, it's not a kind of joke to use it in any way to inform. It was clearly defined. I would love Vanessa's input on that as well. But my guess is that it would fit here.
In our previous policy, there was a statement that tobacco products could be permissible given the permission of the superintendent of Descent. So it was, it was very specific, very clear. I felt like that did reflect our cultural values in our communities. Well, I have not personally read Housat Marie's policy, but I think that that would be something we could add into that, something as simple as just that, you know, ability to make an exception. Or we could add in more specifically, which we know the policy has got to be right.
I think it's worth taking abroad because there are other cultures who have other connections to potentially other materials. And maybe have an avenue for review of that some laws in the policy.
I consider it valid, but I do like, I don't know, the acknowledgement that, you know, we have a very large percentage of our district that's very unique in Michigan. Besides Housat Marie, we have the largest number of students that are Indigenous. And so a direct acknowledgement of the culture to me feels appropriate. That doesn't mean we can't have also something more broad for all. But I mean, tobacco to be, would feel relevant to reflect who we are.
And I agree. But again, this is during work time, so...
Right, so maybe that's not the right section.
So this is while I'm at work, what we don't want you to do while you're at work. More than abroad or outside of work or in other spaces. Or in front of anyone else, right?
Well, and the thing too is that this is for employees and we're going to have something very similar for students. And so if we do, we want to make sure it's everywhere. And we're making systems throughout our policies.
And I think we need to be careful to allow certain things during work. So I think having, but I have avenues to have that conversation.
I mean, it might even fit well under a section that looks at curriculum. Right? Because we're not really talking about personal use. We're talking about how the substance is used in teaching and learning. So that, there might be a spot in there where maybe it would fit better than under an employee or under a student. Because we really, that use would not be appropriate. But the cultural piece, the learning piece, that, that would be potentially appropriate. So I don't, I don't know the answer for sure, but that might be another spot to look.
I think that's a fair, very good question too. This is talking about, for school events, is it different than just in general? I mean, I think if we put it in one spot, it's nice to have it in all of that. We're being consistent. And so, I don't know.
Is that what we keep by our mind?
Why don't, I can, I can, is Housat Marie a true district? Or was it a yellow box, you know?
I could not, I can't figure that out. Every time I go look, it's such a, it's, policy world is very interesting. They don't have the same names, it's just not organized the same. I mean, any district I could find. But I did put, what is nice is the entire policy package is searchable. With one, if we put seven, four, three, four, that policy number right in the search, it'll pop right up. The other thing I did is I just put tobacco right in that search and you can see the six different spots where it showed up. Under employees, under staff, under celebration that it showed up in a number of places. And so it's easy to track.
So I can also follow what Trin asked on if there is what I didn't say specifically regarding tobacco?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
So then we'll go on to forty-two-eleven. Next, if I can get there. Forty-two-twelve, Employee Assistance Order. Forty-two-thirteen, Anti-Nepotism. Forty-two-fourteen, Outside Activities and Employment. Forty-two-fifteen, District Technology and Acceptable Use Policy. And again, as we were looking at these policies, we did have Joe look at our acceptable use to make sure that it is the same as what we have provided. And then forty-two-sixteen, Personal Communication Devices.
I just had a couple of questions on this. I think forty-two-sixteen, forty-two-seventeen, you know, there's some similarities there. I just kind of wondered, to be neat. I know we had a conversation last time of keeping things general is good, but sometimes too general, that can cause problems also. So it's talking about appropriately communicating. And I also wondered if staff are still training on these expectations? Because I think we see, you know, in our world across the board, this is becoming more of an issue. So I just wondered, you know, purely, is kind of those expectations communicated? And then if a new staff comes, you know, partly through the year, is that... I'm sure we get a ton of information handed to them, but just that we're covering our bases. The expectations are clear there.
So for new employees, we provide them, the last two or three years now, we've done a Google Classroom for them so that they have all the resources there. Because it is exactly what you described, it's information overload all at one time. And we don't expect them to remember everything that we share with them. We expect them to be able to find the resources after the fact. So that's sort of our way of keeping everything all together. We do revisit our acceptable use policy every year. We also revisit the idea that if a teacher or a staff member wants to interact on social media for a student, for example, Mount Pleasant High School Student Senate might have a social media group where they use. That teacher would complete a form, sign that, get their administrator's signature, and then that's kept on file with the Human Resources Office. So that's all, there is a reminder sent out every year to staff to say that we go through this policy. Of course, this policy is new for us, so that's something that we certainly can do in future years. But we've just always reminded our staff of that expectation of appropriate use and then of the acceptable use policy. So the idea of defining what's appropriate or inappropriate, I know that's a little bit maybe too general. Although I don't know...
I didn't have ideas of what I could say.
Right, right, right.
I just know of protection for staff, for students, you know, that things are public. I think I read something that said, you know, there's a group. It's not one-on-one communication. Again, I think that protects staff, that protects students. But again, it could kind of fit under that personal communication devices, but also the social media.
Right. We do use a training program at the beginning of others. We were our staff, all have to go through certain modules looking at bloodwork pathogens, cramp in the workplace, concussion awareness, those kinds of things. And we can make a custom module like that where we could include all of these policies. I think folks in Ginger's office know how to do the custom module so we could get something together for them so that they would have this policy there. I personally like this policy, both of them. I think they're more clear than what we have. previously.
I agree. Not a significant improvement of what we had before.
So are there for forty-two sixteen or forty-two seventeen, are there any suggestions or changes, just notes focused on training, protection for staff and students, but are we a beautiful language there? Forty-two eighteen is employee dress and appearance.
I have one question about that. There is, I'll save this sentence, employees shall not dress in a manner that expresses partisan or political speech unless expressly permitted by law. I would kind of like, I would like it if you could give us a little, like, I'm not necessarily saying that we didn't change the policy, I would just like to understand better what that means, like what kind of t-shirt is protected by law and what kind of t-shirt. I also wonder, I assume, I'll save that question for another time, but that is just something that I would like to understand better.
I agree. I had actually the same comment reading it, unless expressed, be permitted by law, I have no idea what that would imply. And yeah, there's some sense, two sentences, actually, the sentence right before, I also didn't know what was the intent and how to interpret it, but it means attire must not distract other employees or students from the learning environment, which poses a safety risk. I was increasing about the attire must not distract and I feel like we had some of the conversations with our dress code for students about the word of distraction when it comes to clothing. So I, I don't have, I mean, my first instinct is to just write that first half of the sentence and say attire must not pose a safety risk, took it at that and go away from any of this instruction. I'm hard to believe about that. Do you might have other thoughts when we read the students' dress code and, and what we want to make sure they hear?
So it would be forty-two eighteen, paragraph A, the first sentence would stay the same, the second sentence would say attire must not pose a safety risk.
Yep.
So it sounds like I probably just need in general to, to get some additional information on that paragraph, but maybe then perhaps that could be a proposed change.
Also, it's, it's cross-referencing specifically to the students' dress code as the same, the sentence above paragraph A, so there is that cross there, but I, I'd like to process with getting clarification and more of that, that distraction.
Are you referring to, to the sentence before A as employees must, I mean, dress in accordance with the student dress code? Is that what you're referring to?
Should we say make sure we cross things?
Anything else for the students?
I think I just reiterated kind of what you said is that the guidelines are clear, that staff know what it means, you know, I think it gives more information.
Okay. Forty-two twenty, use or disposal of district property. Forty-two twenty-one is employee speech. Forty-two twenty-two is unauthorized work stoppages and strikes. And then forty-two twenty-three is regulation.
There is one more in that package that you have on, on the table, first of my files and period information.
Were there any questions about that, that's forty-two twenty-four, right? And then I did check this afternoon, that is on our website. So if we go back to our agenda and look at our policy work from two weeks ago, so I, I do not have information back yet from Trune, the, many of the interns have been out of the office, so I'm expecting I'll get that soon, but you'll see in your work packet this evening, fifty-one oh three, I just wanted to quickly verify that what's there is a reflection of what we discussed. So remember, we did one revision and came back to fifty-one oh three where we're adding that language there in red, the search will be conducted in the presence of two school officials.
Is that a policy we should adapt well, adapt the end school to that?
I, I still would like to wait for their final approval before we adopt the items. And then if we go to policy forty-one oh one, non-discrimination, again, I, I don't, I don't foresee any issues with that because we're really just clarifying who the employment compliance officer is, which is the assistant superintendent for human resources. But because I don't yet have their approval, I would like to wait on approving that policy. And we move on to forty-one oh two, the anti-arrestment policy, that is where we added that official paragraph. Hopefully you all see handwriting, we needed to make any edits to that, but I think that reflects our conversation from two weeks ago. Also, in section three B of that policy, we added social media based on our conversations. Policy forty-one oh three, the whistleblowers' protection, again, we have that introductory paragraph slightly different than the other policy, but I, I think I pulled together what we discussed at our last meeting. And again, policy forty-one oh four, that's looking really at just clarifying that when, who a complaint, if a complaint is made against the superintendent, it goes to the president of the Board of Education and the policy previously had just said president and didn't identify president of what, so we just clarified those sections there. That is in B and in F of that policy. And then policy forty-one oh five, which is the workplace accommodations, we added a, and sort of an introductory statement, again, slightly different than before, but And then finally, forty-one oh seven, just clarifying who the employee would contact for an employment compliance officer, so that would be the superintendent or assistant superintendent for human resources. And then the last policy that we have the edit to right now is forty-one oh nine, break time for nursing mothers, where we've added, we've switched from one year to up to two years. So if those policies all look right, we will still keep them on the list to potentially be approved at our, like I said, December sixth is our next meeting, that seems hard to believe, but we'll keep those in the loop with these policies that we discussed this evening and then until you move over to the next few policies. Does anybody have any questions about our policy review?
I know this is, is, and maybe for the audience here it is, but it's such great work that we're doing and I want to just reiterate how happy I am that we're all spending all that time, that we're looking at the physical speed and for everyone to, you know, kind of, I know it takes time, so I thank everybody over here for taking that time. When we are preparing for our meetings, we do these policies. And we've spent forty-one minutes, we all did one hour.
There you go. So that is all of my reports this evening.
Thank you, gentlemen. Then with us to our requested financial reports.
And have to you the financial reports for general fund and special service funds, revenue and expenditure compared to budget to actual for September twenty twenty to September twenty twenty-two. For general fund, revenue is currently at five percent of budget this year compared to six percent last year and expenditures are at twelve percent of budget this year compared to thirteen percent last year. For special service funds, our self-stable sports, revenue's at thirty-five percent of budget compared to thirty percent last year and expenditures are at eight percent of budget compared to six percent last year. For children's learning center, revenue was at thirteen percent of budget both years and expenditures are at fourteen percent of budget this year compared to sixteen percent last year. For nurse testing program, there are no revenues or expenditures for either year for the month of September. For food service program, revenues are currently at nine percent of budget compared to two percent last year and expenditures are at seven percent of budget compared to twelve percent last year. In our school store, revenues are at twenty-three percent of budget this year compared to twenty, sorry, twenty-two percent of budget this year compared to twenty-three percent last year and expenditures are at zero percent of budget compared to eleven percent last year. For treasurer's report, general fund had cash balances on August thirty-first, a point two million dollars, we had receipts in the month of September, two point nine million and dispersments of six point three million, a balance on September thirtieth of nine point seven million dollars. Our debt retirement fund on August thirty-first had seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, for the month of September, we had income of fifteen thousand and no dispersments. That brings us to balance on September thirtieth of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And for capital project funds on August thirty-first, it's seventeen point eight million, receipts for the month of September, seventy-five thousand and dispersments of two point one million. As we explain there, this is the capital project month, this is twenty-four, all of our projects are being reviewed. That brings us to the end of September thirty, technically, the end of September thirty, fifteen point seven million dollars.
Thank you, Deja. We acknowledge the correspondence that we have received as a board from Kelly and Corey H, Heather from UBS, Amy Gutt, Jamie Pearson, Kathy Loomer, and Jasmine E. This brings us next to our citizens' reports to a dozen more on the agenda and non-agenda And we have a few today and the first one is Eric Becken.
Hello, Eric Becken, sixteenth year in this district as a teacher, fourteen seasons as a coach in spring and winter, sorry, fall. Today I'm with my parents in the area due to the cancellation of Halloween. I'm a seventh grader, a fourth grader, and my question is why I can't let the kids be kids, cancellation of Halloween in elementary. I think our focus is going too far into test, 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 academics, 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 stuff to kids, be kids. I have fond memories of Halloween as a kid. My daughters, I had conversations with them, have had fond memories of Halloween as kids. My eighth, my seventh grader was sad that students won't have the opportunity to look back on the parades in the buildings. I feel Halloween is inclusive. I accept anyone who goes by the door, a companion, whether it's adults, a young child or anybody that shows up, a grandma, there's a game bar, who cares? It brings us together, Halloween does. And so I started to moderate, okay, well, where's this issue coming from that we can't , uh, to the kids? If so, where's the data? Is this someone's feeling that we have an issue here? But again, where's the data? So I started to think about it and I said, okay, well, I'll ask someone that's led to many of these games, uh, with school board and said, hey, can you answer these questions? Their response was something that left me with more questions about what was going on, so I searched and I searched the D E I website and saw nothing but some survey links that were sent out, survey links that I'd not respond to as a coach and parent and other soccer schedules at the time. Now, I find the time if that survey comes back around at this point in time. So my question is like, who is on this D E I committee? When are they? Where's the data? And please, like, if Halloween's an issue, show the data. Is it, again, is it kids, W S S, I don't remember seeing a survey as a parent. My daughters don't remember seeing any questions about it at school either. You can certainly see information for P S C or the Sexual Education Advisory Board, eating locations, all that stuff is on the website where I can find out if the eating is out. Yeah, my daughters are sad, they're upset that they will be able to break through the school, see their friends' costumes, the, I don't know, go see the laurels. Also, I talked to two employees and I said they had been to costumes. One of my daughters, I'm not sure that she has a fly on shirt, if it was fly on shirt that she could be excluded at this point in time, which is upset. And if we continue this round, do we cancel homecoming because someone doesn't get to sit on the court? Do we cancel all valedictorians, valedictorates? Do we cancel a straight break because I saw people on a straight break and I followed that up? And, I mean, is this really the best use of our district resources to be working on this? Let's get it back with kids, be kids. So look at the school board's values, it says, nurture reading abilities, some of these kids are going to dress up in fantastic costumes and you're accepting of it, so hopefully we can get back to this. And I love that student, easy solutions to a problem, the perceived problem, instead of just going off and canceling Halloween. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Nick, Nick Rivera?
Yes. Good evening, school board, community members, community partners, parents, teachers. My name is Nick Rivera, Captain Nick Rivera, and I just wanted to take the time to introduce ourselves today and I promise I won't take up too much of your time. I am accompanied today by First Sergeant Luke Hatterbell and Drill Sergeant Nick King and we are your local Michigan Army National Guard recruiting and retention team. We wanted to take the time to introduce ourselves and distinguish ourselves. And I say distinguish because you all may be familiar with other Army recruiters from the regular Army or the active Army, Army recruits. We are not them. We want to reiterate that we are local, we live here, we work here and this is what we're excited about. A lot of times when Army recruiters come to schools, it's thought of that we're just here to try to talk to your students about joining the Army, but because we are the Michigan Army National Guard, we can offer so much more to that. That's actually what we wanted to address with the school board today, just to make sure that it was understood, see if there was anything that we could help you guys to reach your goals of empowering excellence, right? So my recruiters are professional, they're incredibly engaged, they can actually offer like programmatic solutions for things like anti-bullying campaigns, financial and future planning, they do the conference, public speaking courses, and of course, fitness coaches and stuff as well. And we really just wanted to make sure that that was known throughout the district, you know, so, so we could offer those, those types of things. And I don't want to take up too much of your time today, but it's just so important that I think our students understand what the Michigan Army National Guard can offer and what the recruiters can offer as mentors and community partners. And with that, I did want to just open up to questions in case. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eric Williams.
Hi, I'm Eric Williams, I live in Lake Sabella, we're a school of choice, top-class schools for so many wonderful reasons. But the reason I felt compelled to come here today, I have a second grader, a gander and a preschooler powers and I'm sure you're all aware of this very long thread that got a little outrageous for gander announcing that we need to have it instead of traditional Halloween costumes. There's still going to be, partly, we just don't wear the costumes, so. There was one comment in particular that really caught me and it said at the beginning, quote, "I'm not sure how I'm going to explain this to my daughter anymore." And this came right off the heels of my husband and I having a very open and honest conversation with my son about what safety drills mean as whole, which I'm sure you're aware of as safety drills are active shooter drills. So I read this comment. So I read this comment right after having this very heart-wrenching and honest but open conversation with my son about what happens if shooter comes into school, who you can trust, you hide better than you've ever been, you're quieter than you've ever been, you do not come out unless this degree says it's okay, you peer officer types and you see mom, you see dad, asking all these terrible questions like, you know, will I die, will I get hurt, will my friends die? Can you get to me? Can grandma get to me? My dad and I work very close to the school. And all I could say was, I don't know, and I will try. So in comparison, having a conversation with him about not wearing costumes was pretty easy after that very emotional response. So, you know, we just said, hey, they're not wearing costumes at school, we should. Some people can't afford costumes and also some people don't celebrate Halloween. And that kind of brings me to my next point is, I don't think public schools need to be holiday neighbors for people. I celebrate Halloween, but not everybody does, and that's my honor and privilege as a parent is to be the holiday spirit, which is also why I have a cough and cold because I was home for a few hours at the Grand Rapids Zoo yesterday while Captain America and his crew got every candy, more than they possibly could, and I sucked down mozzarella as fast as possible, so it was fun. But that's just one of the many events that we decided to go to as a family, and there's plenty of free, well, yearly free events at Happy Year, one plus, that we are also planning to go to as a family. And also, it was a great time to have an important conversation with my son about inclusion and equity, because it's very important in our home. I have two sons and I feel it's very important for them to grow up, to be someone who exemplifies including everyone and reaches out to most people. So even though they won't wear their costumes here, you know, there is still school magic. School magic comes in the form of to meet up Mrs. Moe's set-inside books that are spooky chapter books because they love them. It's Mrs. Bishop in the morning giving Arlo a fist bump, welcome to preschool. It's Mrs. Marv giving a quick hug in the secretary's office, and it's Mrs. Marie's room always smelling like strawberries and feeling very cozy. That's satisfying school magic to me. I don't need a school to celebrate holidays for my children, so I just kind of wanted to bring that up. And I know it got kind of out of hand and I'm really sorry, and I hope our committee will be better in the comments section next time to continue to stay respectful to our staff. It was not decisions of teachers and it was not student principles, so just to be respectful. So, thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Next, we have Rowan Tross.
To start off, I'd like to say that I loved the presentation from the Transportation Committee and just this focus on efficiency and the actual achievement of it. I think it's deeply encouraging and very impressive. I also felt like that audit was shorter than last time, and I really liked that. And then in regards to the Halloween costume thing, I think that part of it ignores people from the shoes not to wear a costume all through our elementary school. My brother never wore a costume and I don't think there's any sort of exclusion from that even when I went from there. But I think that it is truly ignored an issue that there's a motivation for the community to be involved in this. I think there's many people that would donate one costume or if aren't cheap ones to donate or possibly people with some abilities and time to make costumes or suits. And I know that possibly it's too late to make any movements for this year, but having that sort of community involvement for following years, I think would be far more beneficial. And I think that was a prime, what Ethan Debridge had said, so I think we could see that from student senate, you know. Overall, I do think that, I think not having costumes is unnecessarily overbearing and that classism has many more serious ramifications, and it feels unfair to put this on this one issue.
Next, we have Alina.
First I'll say, I'm so nervous, I don't know if you should talk in front of people, but I agree with what you were saying there, much more serious issues, but directly because of that, I feel it's ridiculous to take this away. This is a fun time for kids. We've been doing this for fifty-plus years. I've talked to many, many teachers in our district outside it, and they have said it's a very small number of kids who can't have costumes, and I think the Student Council had a great idea. I know this year it's too late for that, but it could be something implemented in the future, families, other places in the public to donate. I think this is very divisive. I think the kids need fun, they need outlets for expression, which is something that's talked about a lot. I think that our kids have gone through hell, and especially for my daughter, who is in kindergarten in COVID pit, she has only experienced one grade. Her first year, it was rain, so she has had some costume experience at school, but she had her first grade last year and it was so much fun. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. But she did a petition at school and she could only do it during recess and after school in the pickup line, and she still got ninety signatures, and that is without access to fifth graders. So she brought her little Halloween season here. I just think it's adorable. I never thought I would support something like that, but I was really proud of her. And I believe it was in Norboro, Massachusetts, I read, that the school board took away the costumes in the grade, and due to public outcry with parents, they reversed the decision. I think you still have time to reverse the decision. I think that this is just something so unimportant, like Rowan said, for you to be dictating. I realize some people have faith issues, but again, I think that's a very small amount, and I think it's just something about, in life, we all have our differences, sometimes we have to concede those differences and live with them and embrace them. And I think by far, the majority of kids want to wear costumes. They're heartbroken. I think that, again, I know there's much bigger issues in the world, but this is a small thing that for these kids that started kindergarten with COVID, just give it back. I mean, what's the big deal? And if you're going to do it, I feel like you should have known at the beginning of the year, not three weeks before Halloween. I think there should have been a family survey about it, and I think if it's something you feel that you need to address in the future, that say, okay, this is last year for the jury office. All right? Thank you.
And from the last but not least, we have two more quoted.
Hi. Hello, everyone, good night. My name is Jeanne Howden, and I believe you should be all aware of costumes at school for Halloween. The first reason to wear costumes is it's fun. You may ask why it's fun, it's because you can show our friends who celebrate, our friends who wear costumes. My second reason to wear costumes at school is because of the great scene, the movies and the shows. My third and final reason you can wear costumes is even though some people don't celebrate Halloween, a lot more people do celebrate it, and if we have a higher quantity of people who do, they want to wear costumes, it's really to keep them.
This concludes citizens' request to address the board and moves us into our conservative agenda. The first thing we have to do in our conservative agenda is the approval of the minutes of the October second, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Still moved. Second, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We do have to approve a couple of things tonight. The first one is the approval of the bills. Let me get to the number. Is there a motion to approve the checks for the time here, September fifteenth through October twelfth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of seven million four hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars in taxes? Still moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then we have the simple about the natural audit.
So under work ethic this evening, you have a variety of documents that Jamie referenced. Probably the easiest thing we'll get is the management letter again, that walks through a little overview of our audit, and we're asking this evening that you approve our audit as presented.
Is there a motion to approve our audit?
Still moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That moves us into our Board of Education discussion.
I have a comment, so I know all board members got invited to the Mid-Michigan Aquatics Recreational Authority presentation as they prepare to launch the fundraising for the new pool, of which we are a part of that authority, it's the city, township, and the school district. And the district is the school district's boundaries. There is a lot of very good information, they've done a lot of excellent work. If you go to Mid-Michigan Aquatics, all one word, midmichiganaquatics.com, all this information is available. They have brochures that they developed and have gone into extensive research and a lot of work on the value, the costs, and the timeline for the implementation of the new community pool, which will potentially probably be located just north where the soccer fields are right now. Great information, I encourage everyone to take a look at it. They have written, doing an ASH, and they'll explain what they asked us and how they built it. There's been a lot of financial analysis done of our community, specific to their community and the impact on our community, and those who would have benefit, and some programming. So please take a look at that. I encourage other board members, this group has presented to us multiple times because we're a part of the authority, we've helped fund the initial development of many of this information, so they're getting ready to launch, so that will be coming before the communities within the next year. I think it's November is what they're shooting for based on the election cycle.
It'll actually be on the ballot if they have election in February twenty-second. So that seals a little bit up in the air, but it's either that February date or the beginning of March.
So bring that to all of our attention, and they will be coming to us and sharing the information that's been shared already, and they're going around the community. They're looking for champions, people to join in that conversation and some basic funding so they can have some dollars to implement, market, to encourage, to initiate that.
Thank you, Jim. I also want to take a minute to acknowledge our public tonight for attending this meeting and sharing their support and concerns regarding our Fall Fun and Fanal Day in our district. We deeply value the perspectives and sentiments of every individual in our community. I also want to thank those of you who have contacted school board members with their feedback, our dedicated students, both supportive and unsupportive of the decision. Our goal is always to ensure a safe, inclusive, and productive learning environment for all students. That being said, the board's responsibility is to listen and reflect on the varied interests of our diverse community. Jennifer, please do let us know how the board can best support you as we look forward and navigate this transition. Thank you.
I think some, as you said, there's been support of this decision, concerns, and so it would be my hope that moving forward, as changes are made, I know not everyone have a vote and everything, but people can definitely have a voice, and I think people will be doing that. And while I was proponent of where can we find that common ground, even if we have different lenses, so I'm just wondering, as changes are rolled out, just how can we learn and grow and reflect, you know, as decisions are made? Maybe more data being shared, maybe more advance warning, you know, just some things like that. And hard decisions are made all the time, but I think moving forward, that would be my hope for all of us, just that we would implement maybe some of those changes that we're hearing that would be helpful, because I think really at the end of the day, everyone is on the same team here in this district, but again, we might see things through different lenses, but that we would, yeah, just learn from it and adjust if we can, try to find that common ground. I know sometimes change goes too slow for some people and too fast for others, and so even though I know that can be frustrating and it might not apply for every decision that we're, maybe some have to slow, something, where can we find kind of that middle, that maybe there's still people upset, but it's maybe kind of getting more people on the same page? And maybe that's by Pollyanna view, I don't know, but just, I think, you know, change is always hard, but just kind of that, it's tricky and it's not easy, and there's a lot that goes into every decision, so.
I would like to thank our school principals who worked really hard to come up with the fall celebrations that will serve their students and still be a core block. They're really working hard, they're really getting creative, and I just wanted to thank them for doing that work.